Good evening, everybody. It is 6 o'clock. I call the meeting of the Sandwich School Committee meeting for June 26, 2024 to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Members of the public may listen and watch the school committee meeting via livestream at www.sandwichtv.org and the Sandwich Community TV Educational Channel, Channel 8. Before we move into our agenda, I would ask us if we could take a moment for silence and reflection and memory of forever 8th grader Colby Lippincott, his parents Tammy and Eric, his brother Tyler, and all their many extended family and friends. Thank you. We will start with our first public forum. I invite anyone who would like to speak at public forum to come to the microphone over here and to make sure you've signed in with our administrative assistant with your name and address. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Victor Viola. I spoke here two meetings ago with my wife about incident that happened in Sandwich on the bus with the JV and the freshman team. Just kind of giving a follow-up. After that meeting, we met with the superintendent and Principal Nelson, my wife and our advocate. We went in, we had a list of requests to work with the superintendent, which was, it actually was a great meeting. It was good, very receptive. We went over everything. And then the last meeting I was at here, he presented it to you. So those are a lot of the things that we suggested for change. I know today we are, I'm going over the student handbook. I just would like to reiterate that I would like there to be language in there, and I'm sure there is, but with zero tolerance and clear concise policies and punishments. I just think through our ordeal, it's been very confusing as to what's disciplinary, what's not, what's under investigation, what isn't. We did have an exit meeting with the superintendent, some staff, the last week of school, Jeannie Nelson, and the meeting started off great. It was fantastic. It was great until the part where we got to open questions at the end, and one of the parents asked Principal Nelson, what, you know, if this happens again, but when it does happen again, how will you handle this differently, so to say, drop the ball? She was very adamant that they didn't drop the ball, which is concerning to me because that, obviously, I don't think there's a single person in town of Sandwich that thinks the ball wasn't dropped. I don't understand that thought process or logic behind it. That is part of the problem that is going on with Sandwich with this divide between parents and, not teachers, but the administration. My wife and I left there completely disgusted. I don't know, I just don't understand. So, all these things can get put in place. We can do, we can change language. We can do all the slide shows in the world and the PowerPoints, but until actual action is taken and followed through with what needs to be done, I think that's the real issue. It's not, everybody has to take accountability. It can't just be the parents. It can't just be the kids. It has to be the admin. To say the ball was not dropped and handled appropriately is ludicrous. I honestly don't get it. So it would be nice to have everyone on the same page. I don't know. I'm trying to rebuild trust, and it's just, as of now, I haven't seen any actions. I've just heard and read. So I'm hoping to see the actions, and I know it's not going to happen overnight. And my family and I are willing to work and give input and just to have this so it doesn't happen again. It just seems like, I've talked to hundreds of parents, I've talked to dozens of teachers. These issues from being swept under the rug are rampant. I've heard talk of parents that they've actually had to have their kids leave the school. The schools picked up the bill and they've had to sign non-disclosure agreements. I don't know what that's about. Why can't parents talk freely about their kids going to another school that our school system has to pick up the bill? That's odd to me, but again, that could just be a formality with school attorneys. I don't know. But these are all concerning things to me. So I would like to just give serious thought for the board about having these clear, concise, common sense policies put in place that protects our children. Because right now, I feel like a lot of our children are protected, but there's some that aren't. So I would like just to see real change and real action, just not words and just carry on. So that is it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Viola. Would anyone else like to be heard at public forum?
Before I read my statement, I just wanted to say thank you. I appreciate what you're doing. The last couple of weeks, you haven't interrupted people to let them know they have 30 seconds left, and you've allowed them to speak freely, and I think that's a nice change from past chairman.
I will interrupt for a moment if you would just state your name and your address.
It's right here. Thank you.
And limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Oh, I'll be less than three. My name is Ryan Landon. I live at Three Greens Word Circle. I was told that at tonight's meeting, our doctor of words was actually going to take some action, so I had to see for myself. Last spring, the soup spoke about the value of DEI programs. Last summer, his actions terminated the only African-American teacher at Sandwich Middle High School. That's some contradiction of words and actions regarding diversity. I hope we get more consistency moving forward. This fall, we fired an unprincipled principal, and I was told we kept him quiet with a severance package of five years' salary, which, if true, is an $800,000 mistake that is on all of you. Had you listened to me last spring, you could have fired him for cause. I already told you that our priorities with sports and our lessons to student athletes were out of whack. Half of you pretended to listen. None of you heard me. No real investigation took place. All this taught our student athletes is that adults are allowed to deny the truth and get away with it. So obviously, we find ourselves facing the same problem again in a different sport. High school is supposed to prepare our kids to be happy and productive members of society. Middle school prepares them for high school. Elementary school prepares them for middle. Last year, our elementary school guidance department presented a Harvard-approved, color-coded, social-emotional learning system. Only one committee member had the wherewithal to say that in his experience teaching 6th graders, they found it rather childish. He was promptly told, oh, no, we've normalized it. Our teachers now say they are feeling blue and green, too. Recently, we had an incident with bullying. I ask you this. Would the victim's day have gotten any better if he had said, guys, I was feeling yellow when I got on this bus, and your words are starting to make me feel red? What are we preparing our kids for? Success in the bubble of academia or serious stress in the real world? Speaking of feeling orange in the first meeting I came to last year, a father spoke about a post-pandemic economy and the financial sacrifices his family and others were making. He suggested the school might also tighten their belt and not have a forever bulging budget. Joe did not say, thank you for being here. I'm sorry your family is going through that. He did not say we could look into cost savings of turning the heat down a degree or two and having our kids wear hoodies in January instead of t-shirts. He did not say maybe our classrooms with floor-to-ceiling windows don't also need to have the lights on on sunny days. Instead of empathy, he criticized the dad's misuse of the terms level funding and level services with a pompous tone that would have barely been appropriate for the final sentence in a high school debate. Even worse, this past September, we had a mom and dad speak. The dad spoke about the confusion and uncertainty around Jim's forced leave of absence. The mom spoke about a potentially dangerous playground. They were met with total silence. No reply equals no respect. When leaders go silent during a crisis, they're making the easy choice from a place of weakness, not the effective choice from a place of strength. Lastly, it's a weird time we're living in, where it's never appropriate to say Merry Christmas, but telling a teammate to kill himself is okay as long as you say it once. Nevertheless, I hope our bullies get the chance to apologize to their teammates so everybody can sleep better at night. For years, I felt shame for being unfaithful to an ex. In a difficult conversation recently, I apologized and told her the truth why we broke up. I say this because I know firsthand that it's only by unburdening yourself with an apology and the truth that one can truly move forward guilt-free. It's human to make mistakes. It's our willingness to examine them that prevents us from making them again. I hope our baseball players get this opportunity to confess and apologize soon rather than carrying their guilt and shame around for years like I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard at public forum? Seeing none, we will move on to our first item of business, and that is the Ireland trip. And Mr. Childress to talk about that.
Just as background, Scott, you have in your packet the proposed trip to Ireland, which is a service learning trip to be held during April vacation of 2025. Scott has extensive experience running these types of trips. As a matter of fact, just in February break, he brought a group of students, high school students, to the Dominican Republic for the same type of service learning experience. So Scott, if you could kind of give an overview of the trip?
Yes, thank you. So the proposed trip would be over spring break from April 19th to April 27th. And the company that I've worked with to get the quote for the pricing and everything is called Kaleidoscope Adventures. In the past, we've gone through EF tours. This is a different company, but it's still a company who specializes in group travel and works with student travel as well, and they have 30 years' experience in the industry as well. So the trip would be a service learning trip, but it would also include visits to some historical sites in Ireland and Northern Ireland. The focus would be, first, they'd be in Derry in Ireland for a few days, and they'd focus on community engagement work and specific projects. I don't know what projects yet because they'll determine those closer to the time of the trip. Because that's something that regularly changes as far as whatever the specific projects they'll be working on. One of the things I chatted with the CEO of the company about when we were planning this trip was that maybe focusing on some of the healing they've done since the Civil War in Northern Ireland and how those divides have been bridged since then, and some of those struggles that people are still dealing with from that conflict, which is over 20 or 30 years ago now. So that's one of the focuses we were looking at. It includes flights, hotels, and two meals a day, breakfast and dinners included, lunches on our own for the most part throughout the trip. All museum fees are included in the price. We have a coach with us 24/7, a motor coach, and we'll have a director as well. The pricing is, it depends on the number of people. The more people that go, the lower the price. So if we get 40 people to go, the price would be approximately $3,500 per student, and it's for two per room. So this is actually, this is a really good price in the Dominican. When we'd done trips to the Dominican Republic and Costa Rica, EF puts three to four students per room in the hotels. And this is a similar price to what the Dominican Republic trip was. Actually, I think the Dominican Republic trip was a little bit more expensive than this, and Ireland is obviously a bit of a further journey and a little more expensive across the boards in other areas. So they gave us a really good quote for that. And the quote is for 40 students and four chaperones. So what's included is professional tour directors. They have emergency phone line that's staffed by their team members. They've got post-departure travel protection, and they also have, that's complimentary and included, it covers trip delays, trip interruption, medical evacuation, damaged and lost luggage. It does not cover cancellation, but travelers can purchase additional cancellation coverage if they wish for up to 72 hours, or they can cancel up to 72 hours before the trip. And it's a reasonable price. I think, I don't know the exact price, but I believe it was around like $200 or something like that for that. It wasn't much. So some of the other things that they have, too, that I really liked about this company was that they have scholarship opportunities for students. There's one scholarship that the school or district can determine, like, who gets a full scholarship. So one student will go on a full scholarship based on the criteria set forth by the company and by us. It would include maybe like when they come back, some kind of presentation for the community service project that we did or something along those lines. It could also be need-based financially. That's up to the district and how they would choose to put that together. And then there are other scholarships that they can apply for that are national travel scholarships where it can be partial or fully funded depending on that they're not connected with the company. These are travel associations that offer a variety of scholarship opportunities. And they also have some fundraising tips on their website as well. So that's a brief overview of it. Like I said, the PowerPoint presentation is available, too, for anyone to see.
Any questions for Mr. Childress?
You previously went with EF Tours, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
I'm very familiar with EF Tours. My daughter worked there when she was beginning her career. And they have a very high, very good reputation. They're located in Cambridge. Where is this company located?
Kaleidoscope is, it is a US-based company, but they also have, the individual I spoke with was actually in Ireland when I spoke to him. I'm not sure of the exact, they're a US-based company. I don't know where they're located out of specifically, though. I'll have to look that up.
Well, with EF being in Cambridge, if there's a problem, we could actually drive there and find out, you know, find out if there's an issue. So I do have a concern about, you don't know where the company is other than you think it's in Ireland. Is that correct?
Well, they have stations in Ireland. It's an international company, so they've got locations.
So is EF Tours, they're based in Switzerland?
Yes, sir.
Is there any possibility, you know, because we hear these horror stories of people booking for a tour, you know, we've seen them on the local media, TV stations. They book for a tour, and then they lose the money and it's gone. What is there, is there an insurance company that protects these kids?
This company is fully insured. And they, like I said, they've been around for over 30 years. They're an established group travel company. They're out of Florida. That's where their headquarters are.
Where is their headquarters?
Oakland, Florida.
Okay.
Or Andrew.
They've been around for 30, they've been around for 30 years?
Yes, sir.
As you said, okay. And the fundraising, because I always have a concern when these things come up about kids who just don't have the money to do this. What are the, maybe you covered this and I went past one ear and out the other. You'll be old sometime. And what fundraising opportunities do these kids have?
Well, we have the full scholarship that's available for
And the scholarship comes from who?
The company provides us with one scholarship.
Okay, that takes care of, how many kids do you intend to take?
As many want to sign up, to be honest.
Excuse me?
As many that will sign up is fine.
Do you have a guesstimate as to?
We have 40 families that signed a petition and gave me like, not petition, like an interest form with their emails and contact that said they were seriously interested after I presented it at a meeting, Zoom meeting with them.
Okay. And other than the scholarship, what other fundraising, and the scholarship doesn't, because the kids don't work for it, they just get one. Other than the scholarship, what other fundraising opportunities are there?
With trips like these, I've done four of them in the past, with the cost, fundraising as a group is difficult because you're talking about raising $3,500, $4,000 per kid. And you don't know the group until they sign up and commit to it. So there's that issue, too. So you don't know how much money you're raising until you get that group together. It could be 10, it could be 40, or any number in between. So what I
Do they raise for themselves? Does the individual raise for themselves, or do they raise for a group?
That's what I would recommend, is the individual raising for themselves. And what we do in the past is we'd have meetings on how they could do that. They could, you know, the student could set up, you know, mowing a certain number of lawns there in the summer. We try to plan them with enough time so that they have time to raise that money. This one's a little tighter than what I usually do. I usually try to plan a year and a half out. This is less than a year. But it seemed like a really good opportunity, and there are students who are currently going to be seniors next year who are really interested in it. So I wanted to try to get it out there sooner than later. But the difficult part of that is it's harder for the students to have as much time to raise the money on their own. But they can. They could mow lawns. They could rake leaves in the fall. They could shovel driveways if it ever snows again around here. They could do jobs like that. There's crowdsourcing that they could do. We could go, the one thing we could
Crowdsourcing isn't, they're not doing anything for that.
Yes, sir. I understand that.
They're just kind of begging for money, correct?
It's asking for sponsorship in a way. I mean, we are doing service work. We're not just going to go on a European vacation. There's work behind it. So that's something we could look for, people in the community that would sponsor students or at least partially sponsor them on that. So those are some options. The company has really good suggestions on their website, practical ideas, grants and scholarships, fundraising ideas that we could use to work with the parents and the students who sign up to figure out the what happened.
Excuse me, Bert. Danielle, did you want to make a comment?
No, I just wanted to say, I was going to ask how many attended the Zoom, because I saw that email about the Zoom. And then another thing we can use as kind of our model, too, is the Yellowstone trip of the fundraising. I mean, they have to raise about that much money, maybe a little bit less, but there are options out there for fundraising. And we had that generous member of the community that donated and paid for one trip for someone to Yellowstone for one student to go. So I think there's plenty of opportunities out there.
Any more comments, questions for Mr. Childress? We have to vote on this tonight.
We have one more question.
You can go. That's all.
Okay. Bert, go ahead.
It's during April vacation next year. So there'll be no teacher coverage that we will need, is that correct?
Correct. And no missed schools, if the dates work out. There's always a wiggle room on that, depending on flights. The tricky part with this trip, which as far as I know it's going to work out, I talked to them about it, but Easter falls in the middle of it or at the beginning of it, basically. So I think Easter's that Sunday. But I insisted that it be over the break because I don't like to miss days of school if we can avoid it. So.
Kevin, did you have a question?
Yeah, excuse me. The ratio, you mentioned about 40 kids interested. I did my math. It was about a 10 to 1 ratio?
Yes, sir.
What would be the, what is the max ratio that would be student to chaperone?
That's, I set it at 10 to 1. And that's from my experience. I've been before with a group of nine students and just myself. And from a chaperoning position, that's a pretty easy number to handle. But if you get more than that, it gets a little trickier. So that's why I set that number. I could have put a lower number, but it also raises the price. If it's higher, like if it's six to one, the price goes up. So I based it off my experience traveling with students and also with the company as well and the work with to kind of play with the numbers and get a good price.
But it won't be higher than 10 to 1?
That's my, that's what, I don't want it to be higher than 10 to 1, no.
Yeah, that's really the, the word's always better. I get that, but I understand the math there. I just want to make sure what is our max. Our max would be 10 to 1. And this target audience is juniors and seniors, or is it open to?
It's open to pretty much any age that parents were willing to let their student travel. I've traveled with freshmen, sophomores, like, freshman's the lowest I've ever traveled with before. Never had any issue with any of the kids traveling. I would suggest, obviously, it would be that a kid that a parent's comfortable with traveling internationally, if it's their first time and they're not used to traveling, then that's a consideration I would probably tell them to think about. But other than that, as far as age, I don't think it's a big deal.
We'll see what they think of a full Irish breakfast. Be an essay on that on the way home.
Kaylee? Just being that you have seniors traveling to a European country, is there an official policy on alcohol consumption?
No alcohol consumption on any of my trips. That's just, that's my policy. I'm sure it's the school's policy as well. So there's no alcohol.
So that while students are away, traveling, they are subject to the code of conduct and the handbook?
Yes. I expect them to not only be subject to that, but also to represent our community and our region on a trip like this well. And the students we usually end up with are more than capable of doing that and have always made me proud of how they've conducted themselves overseas. So.
Just one more question for me. And since this is a company that's new to us, do you know of any local districts that have traveled with this particular group?
I don't, but I can research it and find out if any local
Even regional or Massachusetts?
Yes. I do have, the, I was recommended to this company by someone I know who works, not with them, but like in the travel industry, and they had heard of them. And I talked about some of pros and cons of EF with them before. And he recommended these guys from a price point. So that's how I was introduced to them. I didn't know who they were beforehand. And since then, I've met with their CEO. I've also met with other tour consultants. And I spoke directly to the person who put the Ireland/N Northern Ireland trip together after I told them what I was specifically looking for, which was, I don't want just a tour where we're just going to museums and seeing things, but I want them to work and see the real country and to experience and learn from a service point of view. And to bring that service aspect back so that they do something for their community when they come home, so they can see what people are doing for their communities overseas. So that's my goal in travel.
I may have missed this, but the service piece, you haven't identified that yet?
Yes, we, there is a service element, Community Engagement and Service Project. I don't know the specific project, and it's hard to nail that down until you get closer to the date because how quickly things change in those arenas, I guess is the best way of putting it. So I'm not quite sure exactly what we're doing yet, but there is a Community Engagement and Service Project in the areas that we're going, both in Derry and in Belfast.
Any other questions? Are we prepared to vote? Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Ireland trip for spring break 2025 as presented by Mr. Childress.
Second. Motion by Mr. Seralt, seconded by Danielle Berenda. Chris did. I'm sorry, I missed that. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Six in favor, one opposed. Carries. Have a wonderful trip. I speak highly of the Titanic Museum. I was there a year ago, and it was amazing.
Well, thank you. Thank you, guys, and have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay. Next will be review and act on meeting minutes. The first is the regular business meeting dated June 5, 2024. Do I have a motion? Motion by Bert?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of June 5, 24, regular business meeting.
Second. Second by Mrs. Berenda. Benenda, excuse me. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
I'm an abstention just because I wasn't here.
But you can vote?
I know. I'm just choosing not to.
Okay. Six, four, six and one and
6-0-1.
That's it. Thank you. This is why he was such a good chair. He can do the math. All right. Next up is executive session meeting dated June 5, 2024.
Make a motion to approve the executive session meeting minutes of June 5, 2024.
Motion by Bert. Second. Second by Danielle. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Was that seven? Bert, was your hand up?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
I'm abstaining again.
Mr. Seralt is abstaining, so six
Don't worry that way.
One.
6-0-1.
Zero, one.
Lisa's got it. Don't worry.
Okay. All right. Next, correspondence and announcements. I do not have any correspondence or announcements. Danielle?
I just have one. Starting this weekend, Sandwich Recreation is kicking off all of the Fourth of July events. Saturday night at the Wing School, the Moonlighters are performing from 7 to 9. The fireworks will begin right after at 9 o'clock. Also, the Fourth of July, the 5K Road Race begins at 8:00 a.m. You can register at Sandwich Rec. You can register at sandwichrec.com and the parade will start at 10:30.
Should be fun, let's just hope for good weather. Superintendent's update.
Just before you do that, if everyone could pass the exact minutes back, because those have to go back, oh, looks like we already did it. Thanks. Sorry. I'll take it.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so good evening again, everybody. So just as an update, a week from Monday, starting on July 8th, we're excited to kick off some programs, summer programming for our kids. As we have over the last couple of years, we will be running the Summer Scholars Program, which is kind of a tier two intervention for students in, going into grades one through nine, really with the focus on literacy and math, but the students also during the half-day sessions for three weeks will also have P E R and nature exploration lessons. So concomitantly, in that same time, we're going to have an additional 80 students who receive special services for additional extended school year. So our middle high school will be a very, very busy place during those three weeks. We also, as we did last year, and I know Chris Dantino is pretty excited about this because this was really successful, but we have a 69 incoming kindergarteners doing the ride in, Ride the Wave into Kindergarten program during the first week of August. And it's a great kind of kindergarten orientation, kind of getting the students oriented into the new school building and the school routine. Then at the end of the summer, kind of that third week of August, from the 20th to the 23rd, we once got, once again got word that Desi is funding an August Acceleration Academy focused on literacy, math, and STEAM education for students in grades K through 8. So I know our curriculum director, Jen Kirk, very shortly will be putting that out to our parents, our incoming K through 8 parents. So again, it will be a very busy summer. So something that I just wanted to share, and I know Kaylee asks about this frequently, but I think it, I think back in January, speaking of Jen Kirk, she shared after our first two administrations of our district-wide diagnostic assessment known as I Ready and realized nationally it's pretty much probably the number one diagnostic assessment that's given. So some of the national norms, which our students are benchmarked against, are fairly high. So I put the summary reports for overall results in reading and math, but also the growth data. So this is inclusive of all of our students K through 8. We do not administer it at the high school level. And the thing that I like about this is it is pretty easy graphically to read, where the green represents students that are on or above grade level, the yellow represents one grade level below, and the red would be two or more grade levels below. So overall, and you can see in reading K through 8, at the end of the year, and we did this in the ballpark of around May 15th or so, the administration, about 77% of our students finished at or above grade level. And you see the breakdown for our three schools, Forestdale, Oak Ridge, and the middle high school. Keep in mind, as I said in the background notes, this is the year that we really administered it with a high degree of fidelity, particularly at the middle high school. Something that I think is impressive is looking at the growth data, realize that I Ready really sets benchmarks for each individual student, something known as annual growth and then typical growth. So if a student were to meet all of their benchmarks in the various areas for reading, their typical growth would be at 100%. Across our district, our median was 152%. You know, we were, we were having a conversation, myself and Danielle, before the meeting started. We had some classroom teachers, one of which we're honoring this evening, that had students in the ballpark of 300, 400%. It is an exact correlation, but you're talking about kiddos that increased their reading by three or four grade levels in the span of one year. So I think, you know, as a district, we're doing well, but I would also focus attention on that middle piece at Oak Ridge, that the typical growth data was at 192%, which is pretty amazing. As a district, as far as our stretch growth, you can see in the far right, that upper was at 68%. We, the normed across the country is in the ballpark of about 25 to 35%. So again, that's a good barometer. As far as math, it's positive, but it's not as strong as our reading results, and typically our, our MCAS reflects that as well. But we finished the, the year K through 8 at 71% of our students being on or above grade level. And you can see the breakdown across our schools. And then that same growth data, again, our median across the district K through 8 was at 127%. And then you could see Forestdale at 100%. Again, high performance from Oak Ridge at 143% and the middle high school at 133%. So again, this is only one snapshot. It's part of the data puzzle piece, but this is really good data, it's rich data, and it's data that's used to determine things like flexible instructional groups, but also looking at those kids that need tier two or short-term interventions or something more intensive tier three. And again, it's not a panacea, it's not everything, but it is valuable data for our teachers.
Could you just, for the folks at home, just to kind of compare and contrast simply, how this, the types of data that you're getting and, and how students are performing, what's significant about I Ready that is not accomplished with the MCAS?
So I think this district made the investment in, in I Ready as did many districts across the Commonwealth, because there's a high correlation rate with I Ready with MCAS, because it's very much mapped to the state standards. I think the beautiful thing about this is it's a shorter-term test and it's administered three times per year. So it has more of a diagnostic feature to it. Um, you know, I'm, I'm giving you the super high-level reports. We can drill down more by school, you could drill down by individual students, you could drill down by an individual classroom and so on. So if you're really looking at the results, you know, based upon the fall, the winter, and then the spring administration, it can give you some really rich information about an individual student, a cohort of students, a grade level, or a full school.
So it's, it's just in time, real-time-
Correct.
-assessments, so corrections can be made in grade-
Mm-hmm.
-as opposed to after the fact that MCAS is at the end of a grade level.
Yeah, like, you know, to use the old analogy that Jay McTie likes to use, something like an MCAS is more of like an autopsy, whereas this type of test would be more of like a physical exam, a physical.
Kaylee? Um, just looking over the results for the middle high school, and this is, this is just for seventh and eighth. Obviously, this is, and this is the first year that they've, we've taken this. So to your point, this isn't necessarily useful at this particular juncture in looking like systemically at what's happening. But if I'm reading this right, roughly 40% are reading below grade level, at least one level below grade level, and then roughly 54, their, their math is at least one level below. How, if you had to take a stab in the dark, how much of that do you think is related to maybe some curriculum changes that need to happen, and how much is related to the fact that these were our third and fourth graders during the COVID years and that we may still be sort of catching up on some of that?
Can I choose D, all of the above?
Sure.
And I'm going to give you, you gave me A and B, but I'm also going to give you C. I would say of the results that I would look at with the little bit of a crooked eye the most, it would be the middle high school for the simple reason that that was the first year our seventh and eighth grade students were administered I Ready, whereas I think at Forestdale and definitely at Oak Ridge, it has become more routine in the life of the school. I think just some of the logistics were a little bit of a challenge at the middle high school. So I, I would anticipate the results will improve.
Any other questions or comments?
Just a question on, so when it says students assessed at the middle high school, is that number lower because that-
Because it was only seventh and eighth grade students. It is counting all of our kids. It pulls all the data from Power School, so you see the 895 kids, they pulled everybody, seven through 12.
Thank you. Encouraging.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm trying to articulate my question, but it's kind of along lines of what Kaylee was getting at. I, you done that as well. I guess in simple terms, how big of a concern is that?
Um, I think it's a data point, and let's see in August, when we do get MCAS results, the degree of correlation with seventh and eighth grade ELA results.
Right, because I mean, I look at that and I see big yellow, big red, I'm concerned, but it's one day, it's one test. I'm, I'm trying to, I'm not articulating very well, but I'm trying to calibrate that in my mind of how accurate that is, but I see what you're saying. I'll, I'll look forward to, maybe we can revisit this in the first August meeting if we have to, when do we get the MCAS results?
Uh, we get the initial results in August, late August, early September.
So when we do that, if we could do the compare and contrast and see if there is any correlation, I'd be very interested in seeing that.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
We are also new to the new math curriculum in the seventh and eighth grade.
Correct.
So-
Reveal math.
So next year perhaps will be a more significant year and maybe see a more positive trend.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Budget.
Hey. You have the May report in front of you. Happy to say that we're still in good shape. We're recognizing some savings in the utility department with the closing of the Wing School. Probably, are you seeing $91,000 worth of savings? The new building will use probably a sixth of the energy output that the Wing School did, so it's going to be a huge savings. I mean, we paid $142,000 worth of Wing Utilities and it was empty for half the year. And for six months at the new building, it's only been $11,000. So that'll be great. With those savings, we are going to do some more maintenance projects, including some POs that have just come through for the basketball courts, so that'll be good. Fixtures for the Little ones bathrooms at Forestdale, so we can work on them, some acoustics for meeting rooms and so on. We've used 1.2 million worth of circuit breaker and that's it for the year, so we should be ending pretty much on track where we should be.
How much do you anticipate, do you anticipate returning anything or are we just talking pocket change?
I'm going to try to spend it all if I can, maybe turn back a little, but I'll be working with Carolyn at Town Hall and we'll be closing out the books fairly soon and opening up the new year.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're at 0.7%, so by the time you close out June-
Right.
-you're going to be close.
Mm-hmm.
But that's great budgeting-
Yep.
-and great spending.
Yep.
Well, anything we can do, you're already doing it, I know, but the, you know, if it's one more classroom that we can replace the floor in or whatever that might be, it's, because then we're not going back next year asking for anything we can do now.
Doing everything possible in-house with the staff that we have, and we are trying to get contractors lined up every day.
Okay.
Chris is working very hard on that.
I just had a quick question. Um, how does special ed, any, how does out-of-district placement, any numbers coming in, any new students coming in?
I think we've, we've seen a little bit of savings this year. Um, a couple of the kids aged out of their out-of-district placements, and I think Mr. McNamara's brought a couple of kids back into district.
Oh, good.
So he's doing well.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you, Michelle.
Okay.
Uh, next item, old business. First topic is our July workshop, June 18th, uh, July 18th. We do have Jim Hardy, who will facilitate for us. We need to give him a topic so he can prepare for that facilitation. So although we make our, have our discussion, hopefully you've been thinking about this and if we could contribute one or two topics and hopefully within a relatively quick timeframe, we can get some consensus on a topic. And that will be a five o'clock start time, and Joe and I will meet to kind of deal with the logistics around that, and I'll be in touch with Jim when we, when I have something to offer him. So who wants to offer a topic? Tracy?
Um, so one thing I was thinking about would be community relations and just as a group, how we interact with the community, relationship building, what other people are doing, what he sees as effective uses of time. Even, even within that, how to hear comments, and then how does that relate to how things get responded to in interacting and following up with the community? That was one topic idea I thought of.
So community, building relationships, interacting with the community, how we do that, how do we do that in the guise, excuse me, open meeting rule, law? How we move from what we hear, because we don't engage in public-
Exactly.
-comment with, with folks talking with us, but where does it go from there?
Yeah.
And how do we identify the issues and how do they percolate up to our agenda?
Exactly. And as a group, that everyone's taking that same protocol.
Okay.
Yeah.
Other ideas?
Mine was very simplistic, just a review of or an assessment of the goals we had set last year. I found that process very engaging and helpful for us, so maybe an assessment of how did we do against those goals we set last year? Do we remember what they were? And establishing goals moving forward. So super simplistic, but I do think the communication piece was a part of that, so maybe with some more concrete action steps. Um, I think we have a great advantage in the fact that we had the exact same board here now than we had last year, so maybe we don't need to go back to kind of square one with it, but can move forward with that.
And maybe some type of reflection on the part of the committee members, evaluation, reflection, evaluation in terms of setting goals for next year?
Um, I'm not making this up, I actually had two, but they're exactly what was already said. Goal setting and how do we institutionalize that and become, that becomes a norm that we, um, but I agree with Tracy completely. How do we, you know, we've had very individual issues come up and we, we have engagement and the, the public comment is open meeting law, it's not the way we want to do it, it's just the way Master and Law reads. But the other part is how can we increase engagement on just some of these other issues? I mean, we've, we passed a budget and we never had anybody come to talk to us about the budget. No one came to public comment, no one came to public hearing about a budget. And I know it's, I get it, it's not the most exciting thing, but on the day-to-day stuff, the, the routine stuff, how can we, how can we bolster engagement? Um, I, I, so I'd agree with you, that was, that was my top issue, so.
Yeah, that's a great point. And I think we had put that in the evaluation, uh, well, one of the, when we gave ideas for goals- goals for the superintendent for next year, community engagement, maybe hold coffee hours at the Center for Active Living and have constituents come to that, have school committee members present as available, especially during the budget season. But yeah, just to be more readily available.
So some action, taking action.
Taking action to it, yeah. And you know what was helpful last year? What, we got out of that workshop, we did self evaluations that Jim Hardy compiled for us. That was really helpful. But we also set the agenda for the year, which was, that took all the guesswork out of each, you know, bi-weekly meeting that we had. So I think that, continue to do that, I would recommend.
That was a very valuable thing last year, just working with the soup, that we had a proactive plan. It was never, okay, what's this week? We already knew, we already knew what March was, what April was and that kind of thing. So I think institutionalizing that as well. But.
So these are really important themes and Jim's pretty skilled at pulling these kinds of things together. So they're not, they're all related in some way. Is there anything else to add to this list, Bert?
Dealing with the media, we've had some fairly...
Okay, because that's community, so, okay.
It is a connection there, but we've had some articles that have not been very flowery.
Did you have something, Kaylee?
No.
Oh, okay, okay. So it sounds like we have four or five things, but if Joe and I sit together, or I just sit and just kind of wield them into an outline, share them with Joe, with Jim and ask him if he could. Because I'm thinking about the workshops that MASC offers. They offer distinct, in a number of these, but given that we're talking about maybe a three-hour period, I mean, I can't imagine much more, you know? So what can we realistically do that's interactive, wielding in the community relations piece, how we communicate with the media, how do we communicate with each other, how we move from public comment idea to actionable reviewing and revising our goals based on the superintendent's goals, because obviously they should be related. Okay. What I will do is, I'll play around with this. If you have some more thoughts related to this, shoot it my way. Don't do reply all, but I will put together a document that tries to pull some of these together and I'll shoot it out to all of you. You can comment to me individually, not reply all. And I will pull a document together the first part of next week to try to get up to Jim.
Maybe ask Mr. Hardy, you know, he's very good. And give him, consult with him and see what he thinks he's best at doing, because he is very good.
Absolutely.
It's his last hurrah. He retires in August.
It's his last one too, so make it.
I think he retires in August.
Yeah.
And maybe we should.
He's changing his phone.
For all we can.
He's going to change his phone number.
Okay. Thank you. We feel like we're there. We don't have an absolute A topic, but we have themes within the broader topic of community relations and engagement and goal setting. Good. All right. Other topics not unreasonably anticipated, voted by the chair.
I have a quick alibi, if I may, to go back to superintendent. Just a quick question. You know, we're talking about evaluation or assessments for the kids. I know it's evaluation season for teachers and staff. Are those complete for the season, for the year? Or where does that stand?
That is complete for all professional and support staff. The only outstanding is admin, which will be completed by July 15th.
Thank you.
New business, and this is really exciting tonight. We are, next item up is the awards, recognition of the Sandwich Public Schools Golden Apple Awards. And just for the folks at home, I know that Joe talked about this earlier when the idea came up, but the, this evening, the Sandwich School Committee is recognizing and honoring exemplary staff members who consistently go above and beyond to meet the needs of students and their families. As a school committee, it's an elected governance board that represents families and community. We have taken nominations from families. From those nominations, we've determined the worthy recipients, one from each school of the Sandwich Public Schools Golden Apple Award. And just quickly, the criteria, and then members of the committee will introduce the award winners and make that presentation. Understanding the needs of students and families. The educator, staff member consistently understands the specific needs of their students and addresses it in a personalized and differentiated manner. Demonstration of creativity, enthusiasm and determination. The educator, staff member approaches instruction and/or the provision of services with creativity and enthusiasm to the point that is motivating to students. There is always determination to ensure that student achievement is at the forefront of all their practices. Academic and/or social emotional impact. The educator, staff member has made a substantial difference in the student's life through their instruction and/or provision of services so that the student's academic or social emotional outcomes have been dramatically impacted upon for the better. Partnership to achieve excellence. The educator, staff member consistently communicates and proactively partners with families in a personalized way so the student achievement and well-being is highly impacted. 116 nominations were submitted. Amazing. To give you the depth, and I would think the committee's challenge to come up with four people. Now to start the first Golden Apple Award is Forestale with Kaylee Adams.
Before we call for it forward, this first recipient just wanted to share a few things from the nomination. One parent said, her classroom is always a positive and welcoming place to be. Someone else said she goes above and beyond to support her kindergarten students and their parents. She makes each child feel loved and gives them the tools they need to succeed. She is always positive and you can tell that she genuinely cares about her students. And as the parent of one of her former kindergarteners, I can confirm, we want to give this award for Forestale to Ms. Laura Teduski.
Are you there?
All right. You guys have a microphone?
We can hear you. So not to steal Christine's thunder, but this certain dedicated teacher is actually in the Yellowstone right now, chaperoning a group of sixth graders. So take it away, Christine.
Absolutely. Well, Mr. Gera has received unprecedented six nominations for the Golden Apple Award for the Oak Ridge School. I'm going to read several of the comments from parents that help kind of conceptualize, and you can obviously see in the van there who he is. First parent says, my son entered school, entered the school year with very low expectations and enthusiasm, but when he came home that first week of school, I knew something was different. He was so excited. He was proud to tell me about everything he did in school and how much he adored his teachers. My son couldn't wait to go back to school the next day, and now even as we're approaching summer vacation, he's sad that the school year is ending. Another parent says, he not only creates engaging lessons, but uses humor as well to connect and bring joy to his students. Mr. Gera speaks to his students with such kindness and compassion that they feel comfortable taking risks in the classroom and sharing their authentic selves. Another parent says, I'm not sure he will ever truly understand what an impact he has had on my son. He's also reminded me as an educator to never forget what a difference you can make by building positive relationships and focusing on the strengths and interests of each individual child. I do find it hard to narrow it down to a few specific things. It's almost more of a feeling the second you enter his classroom, his style of teaching, the way he engages with the kids and his ability to make all of them feel so special. There's more. One does not have to speak with him for more than a few minutes to know that he is fully 110% invested in what he does. You can tell that this was his calling in life and he has definitely fully embraced that. He teaches them not only academically, but also shows them how to be good humans, how to problem solve and how to navigate conflict. Mr. Gera fights for his children. He has been a part of multiple PTA meetings, putting in requests for his students, trying to provide multiple different resources to reach the many different personality types he teaches throughout the day. He has a wonderful way of relating to the kids and gaining their trust. He has consistently understood my child's specific needs and addressed them in a personalized and differentiated manner. My child has developed strong relationships with his peers thanks to your emphasis on collaboration and respect in the classroom. Your encouragement and positive reinforcement have boosted his self-esteem tremendously. And repeatedly across all the nominations, my child loves school because of him. So it brings me great joy to present the 2024 Golden Apple Award for the Oak Ridge School to Mr. Arthur Gera. Congratulations.
He really appreciates it. Sorry, we have some audio issues here, but congratulations, Arthur. So well deserved.
The traveler behind him doesn't seem too impressed.
I just wanted to chime in. Mr. Gera, one of your students is here. You're in Yellowstone, but she felt obligated to come and say congratulations to you. So Hadley, if you want to come up and wave to Mr. Gera, you certainly can. Hadley heard about it and wanted to be here. So come up behind here, you can wave to him from, yeah. You can come right over here and you can say congratulations if you want. Say congratulations to him.
Here, talk right here. Congratulations, Mr. Gera.
Now clean those kids up and get some dinner, okay? See you, pal.
Okay, so moving on to the middle high school. I have the pleasure of presenting the next Golden Apple Award to a teacher that has made a profound impact, not only with her students, but has driven her colleagues to perform at a higher level. Haley Stockwell, formerly known as Haley Clark, is the recipient of this year's Golden Apple Award for the middle school at Sandwich Middle High School. Haley has taught social studies in Sandwich for seven years and has been invested in this district since day one. After school, you can find her in the gym coaching basketball or look into the stands at any sporting event or performance after school hours, and chances are, she will be there supporting her students and fellow colleagues. It is evident that she loves her job. Some comments received by some families in the nomination process were, she pays attention to not just academic progress, she is tuned into the students' preferences, habits and behaviors. She routinely checks in with students if something seems off. She is fair, responsive and encouraging. She is funny and kind to all students while still maintaining high standards for academics and behavior. When I reached out to one of her colleagues from the history department, he commented that her lesson in project development urged students to go deeper into their own investigation of topics and promotes them to become lifelong learners. Also said, I can say without exaggeration that she is an innovative educator, dynamic instructor and a leader with vision, a more impactful teacher you will not find. Congratulations, Haley. So this is so fun. We're having a lot of fun tonight. So I'm extremely honored to share these wonderful accolades for Beth Donahue from the high school. You will notice a theme throughout, as Ms. Donahue's dedication to going above and beyond in all areas of her students' lives is mentioned numerous times in the following. One parent says, Ms. Donahue embodies the qualities that the Golden Apple Award seeks to recognize. Her unwavering support, creativity, enthusiasm and partnership have made a lasting impact on our daughter's academic and social emotional growth. She is a remarkable educator who truly goes above and beyond to meet the needs of her students and their families. Another, Ms. Donahue has made a substantial difference in our daughter's lives, not only academically, but also socially and emotionally. Her encouragement has helped our daughter believe in her ability to handle more challenging coursework, leading to her success in honors classes. Ms. Donahue went above and beyond in communicating with us about the MCAS exams and what we can expect with a student on a 504 plan. She spent her personal time, not work time, to make sure our concerns were met. I have never had an educator care so much about our child's success in school. And another, Mrs. Donahue's enthusiasm for education extends beyond the classroom. She runs the school's peer leadership program and serves as the advisor for the adaptive dance program, which fosters our children's involvement and growth within the school community. If this is not enough, Mrs. Donahue teaches computer science and digital literacy and her teaching methods are engaging and tailored to her students' learning styles, making her one of our child's favorite teachers. Mrs. Donahue has taken a personal interest in helping our child succeed. She has been an unwavering advocate for IEPs, ensuring that accommodations are tailored to support learning styles effectively. And another, in summary, Mrs. Donahue embodies the qualities that the Golden Apple Award seeks to recognize. Her unwavering support, creativity and enthusiasm have made a lasting impact. Thank you, Beth. Come on up for your award.
So if we could have Laura, Beth and Haley to come up just for a quick photo with your award, please?
Maybe if you could just stand in front of us and between us and we might be able to get us all in. If we get real close.
What a wonderful way to end the year on such a high note. Just to say thank you, not only to the 116 that were nominated, but to all our fine faculty and staff who toil away every day. Thank you. Okay. Next up is student family handbooks.
How are we going to handle this by school?
I think we can go in order of school. I think Forestale and Oak Ridge are very, very quick and you have in your packets all of the proposed changes. So maybe if we start with Kristin Tino on the two or three minor changes in the Forestale. minor changes in the Forestale.
And I just want to say, before you leave, Laura, congratulations on your Golden Apple Award. Well deserved. As Dr. Maruschak mentioned, just some very brief additions to our Forestale handbook. The first addition has to do with cybersecurity and privacy. This is being added in through our Director of Technology, Bryce Harper. This is a district-wide agenda that will be in the handbook. You all have it, so I don't have to read through it. It's like three or four paragraphs, but basically it's cybersecurity and privacy for student benefit. The last piece we have at Forestale, this has become an issue over the school year, and you wouldn't think it would be, but it is for five, six, and seven-year-olds, but the use of smartphones, smartwatches, and digital cameras. So student use of devices from home, such as smartphones, smartwatches, and digital cameras, or iPads, will not be permitted at Forestale. These devices, when we do find that students have them, we do just kind of retrieve them, bring them to the office, and have a caregiver come and pick them up. It just really becomes destructive in the classroom. Some kids, five- and six-year-olds, will say, "Hey, I got a picture of you." That goes home, parents, they're alarmed that there's a picture possibly out there. They don't know where it's going of their child. So we look into all of these, and many times, there's no picture. But there are students who will wear smartwatches or will have a smartphone, and it just becomes a big distraction. So we've added that into our handbook for families. And that is it. Are there any questions?
Smartwatches as seven-year-olds? Smartwatches?
Five-year-olds, kindergarten. Yes.
Do you want to vote each separately?
I think you could do all of them and ask. I think Trish Hill now?
Thank you, Chris.
Good evening, everyone. For the Oak Ridge handbook, I sent you a draft and highlighted changes in yellow. We also have the policy that Chris mentioned. It's actually just hyperlinked into our presentation, so that same one is there just as a hyperlink. Most of our changes were cosmetic, basically aligning new staff names and things like that into the document. One thing that was a more significant change that isn't highlighted just because it's so pervasive through the document is that our team actually felt very strongly about changing the word from "parents" to "family" or "caregivers" to represent families that might have a grandparent or a student who may be in foster care, to be more inclusive that way. So that was the major change for ours, but I didn't highlight it because that term occurs throughout the document. But all of the changes for us were primarily cosmetic.
Any questions, comments?
I noticed the part about asking for a parental release was crossed out. Why?
Because we have a letter that the families put in. We don't use the card anymore, so it had to do with more of the fact that there's a card, it mentioned a card that they fill out, so now there's a letter that they send in.
So if a kid doesn't, if a kid doesn't make any difference, the parent does. If the parent doesn't want the kid's picture used in media, they sign a release? Or it's the other way around?
So there's two places. They can fill it out on Power School. So when they do their registration for school, they can put it in Power School. There's a box that they can check, or they can send a letter directly to the office.
It says they do?
That they choose not to have their child's photo shared.
They have, permission is otherwise assumed until they say no?
Correct.
Okay, but why was it taken out of the manual?
Because it referenced that it was on a card that we sent home, and we don't send that card home any longer.
Anything else?
Just minor admin. I sent you a note on it. My name is spelled, my name and email are misspelled.
Well, we will rectify that immediately.
Lot of howls there.
We've all done it. Apologies.
It's all good.
All right. Any other questions?
You're not the first, you won't be the last.
Sorry about that.
Oh, good. Thanks.
Thanks, Trish. And Ms. Nelson?
Our policy is essentially reflecting Kristin Tino's policy that he's implementing at the Forestale School. So Sandwich Middle High School has had a phone policy that has been per teacher discretion in individual classrooms. However, in the middle school, two years ago, the middle school teachers collectively said cell phones are not allowed in the middle school. And so admins supported that because it was a uniform decision. So what I'm presenting tonight has been in effect for two years in grade seven and eight. So our hope is to just take it and move it up, nine through 12. So it's based on research on the optimal learning environment for students to remove all distractions, create a safe environment. Safety for them means the one-to-one device that we give them, the Chromebook, we have protective software that filters everything they're looking at. So the school will receive an alert if they're on a website, or there's language being used or inappropriate content. So we have that software. What we don't have is protective software for individual cell phones. So they have their one-to-one device, and they really can fulfill all academic responsibilities with their one-to-one device. So our plan is to not allow cell phones, personal devices, smartwatches, earbuds, throughout the school day from 7:30 to 2:00 p.m. Also for extra help sessions or detention, any extension of the school day in the building in a classroom setting. So we just broke it down, so it's super clear how we're going to handle it, which is what we do currently with middle schoolers. The parent, for the first offense, a teacher would ask the student to take the cellphone to the main office and leave it there, and the parent or guardian is notified by an administrator. The student then can collect the phone at the end of the school day. The second offense would be that the parent and guardian is notified of the offense, the student receives a one-hour detention. When I say the parent and guardian is notified of the offense, we typically do a conference call with the student in the room and call the family and explain the policy and explain how the phone was being used and how it's not school policy and it's time of learning. So that's typically our policy. And then the detention can be served Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday, anytime between 2:00 and 4:00. The third offense, the parent and guardian would be invited into the school for a meeting and to collect the device. The student would be issued a two-hour detention, and the recommendation from the school to the family would be, "If your student doesn't need the phone, please leave the phone at home or in the car or at home." If the student must bring the phone to school, then the student will check it in in the main office at 7:15, and the student can collect the phone, and that would take shape for the remainder of the semester. So we have been operating, like I said, with these kind of infraction violations in the middle school, and students very quickly understand the policy, and it's very, very clear with the progressive kind of increase in consequence, and it has been, in my opinion, successful in the middle school. We do have exceptions, obviously. We do have students that use personal electronic devices for medical reasons, for IEPs, for English language learning. Those students 100% will have their device and access to their devices. If you do need to contact your student, you can call the main office as a parent. The second piece is that we are this summer going to provide every classroom at Sandwich Middle High School with a hanging storage pocket system that would be numbered. So if a student does have their cellphone, they go into a classroom, there is a safe, clear place for them to house their phone. And then they would take the phone and go to the next class. In the next class, there would be also a storage unit accessible. So consistency is the key here, I think, for staff as well and for student expectations. Any questions?
With the middle school experience, what percentage of students got to the third option, third sanction?
Yeah. We had repeat offenders, and in those cases, not a large percent, because the parents were truly supportive in this case, and many parents, we would call and say, "It's strike three, you need to come." And some of them said, "Keep it for five days. You're doing me a favor." So others come because they need it for sports, and they need it for activities, and they need it for contact. But it does, when they know there is a very clear consequence, then they will meet us there, the students.
I just had a question about after-school. After-school events, athletics, on the buses, et cetera, where we've just run into some issues. How are we going to handle that?
Right. And we've been talking as a team, an admin team with athletics, and I know that Mr. Donovan, Sean Donovan, is working with Joe on that piece of it. That's a complex piece in the fact that if you have students who are traveling and all of the different changes that can happen with events and timing, games, and there is that factor, but it is under consultation.
I think the short answer to that, Danielle, is supervision. Supervision of the coaches. We're not trying to be heavy-handed here, and we understand family needs with respect to lining up rides and that type of stuff. So I think the direct supervision in a manageable fashion by the coaches will be paramount for that piece.
And we're working on something with Sean Donovan to put in place?
Yeah.
I look forward to that.
And so field trips, even like to Yellowstone, you're working on a policy for something like that?
So in the policy that currently exists, if they are on a school-sponsored field trip, and we have implemented that in the middle school for field trips that occur during the academic year where they're traveling, off-campus, then there is no phone allowed because it's school policy. Yellowstone's a unique, these overnight, kind of far-away, distance, those I feel like are unique situations for parents as well. I think sending their children, there's some comfort level knowing they have access to them. However, in our case, students going abroad, this would not take, we would not implement this policy with students traveling, for example, with Mr. Childress to Europe and things like that. I don't think that that would be applicable in this case.
What if the phone rings while it's hung up in the classroom?
Right. And then it does say powered off. I mean, we're going to...
Powered off, okay.
Yeah, so I'm sure the teacher would then advise the student to power off the phone or put it on silence.
Christine?
I have a question about, first of all, the definition of personal technology. Does this include personal laptops, iPads as well? Is that part of the restriction? Because we all know that you can still text and take pictures and all...
Right. So yes, it does include all of that for two reasons. Number one, our protective software is connected to our Chromebook and school-issued devices, the safety piece of it. And the second piece is all of the state testing must occur, all of the MCAS testing, all that software is already prepped on our Chromebooks, so it's actually in their best interest to learn the different tools that the Chromebook has, especially like with math, MCAS testing, it's all digital. So they're better served using the school-issued device daily at school.
So I guess my suggestion would be to make sure that that's really clear in that definition of beginning, because it says earbuds. It doesn't necessarily say iPads, and we can add that. Laptops, et cetera. The other one was, I'm assuming, but again, maybe some direct correlation, that any of those exceptions, you have a student who's diabetic and uses an iPad to monitor blood sugar, et cetera, might have, or a field trip or something like that where you might, or sports after school, where there might be a need for a cellphone or an exception. I'm assuming all the things we're seeking to avoid are all within the technology acceptable use policy, so maybe some direct link to, yes, there might be some exceptions to this, but even if you're allowed to have an iPhone during the day, you can't be recording other students, you can't be posting, you can't be on social media, whatever the specific guidelines are. So a link between that, when an exception occurs, that there still are some guidelines that need to be followed.
That's great.
And I guess, might be an unrelated question, but I wasn't able to check thoroughly to see, does Oak Ridge also have the no-cellphone, no-technology policy as part of that?
I, yes.
Is that in the handbook as well? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Kevin?
Quick question on headphones. My kids have said in the past, they've had a class where some activity was going on where they actually used their headphones, but it says it's prohibited.
So we do have, in all of our world language classes, we have school sets of headphones in very specific classes. There are lots of, so we can provide those. I think this is, we're referring to earbuds that would be directly connected to a personal cellphone where they're listening to music and...
I'm with you, I get it. I just know that someone's going to ask that question. So if it is in Spanish, and they're listening to something, is the school going to provide the headphones, or can a kid bring their own, student bring their own headphones?
So if their own headphones fit into their school-issued device or whatever piece of equipment that they're using per teacher guideline, then yes. But again, like I know just from the world language department, we have tremendous access to the small ones, we have the big ones, we have the microphone, earphones, so there's, the school is equipped with that, with those tools for kids to listen to instruction.
Maybe a comment about that?
Sure.
Under exceptions or some way to be, to spell it out?
Okay, those are good ideas. Anything else? I have a couple other things, unless there are more questions on the...
Actually, so students are not able to use cell phones in the hallway, during lunch, on bathroom breaks. I mean, that's obviously going to be difficult to supervise and to ensure if they are able to have them on their person.
Right.
They would conceivably still access them at some point.
Right. So we have a school council that is composed of teachers, parents, students, admin, and we meet monthly. And so we discussed all of these, and we looked at policies. So schools all around us have cellphone policies in different forms, and it was decided at our school council that the best approach would be a really clear, consistent, no-phone policy. So we do want them to socialize, we want them to have relationships and look at each other and have conversations and build friendships and those social skills. And so we decided at the school council that it wouldn't be in their, in kids' best interest to then say, "Okay, in the cafeteria, when you go to lunch, you can all be on your individual phones." And so we think it's easier for students to sometimes when things are very, very clear and there's no blurry line that could then spill over into a misunderstanding of like going up into the hall from the cafeteria or down to the cafeteria. So that was kind of the consensus.
So, good luck. I think it's a great policy. It needs to happen. My concern is for students. I mean, I know as a fully functioning, or mostly fully functioning adult, that it's hard to go without something that you have with you all the time and you have that access. So I know it's going to be really challenging for students coming off of summer vacation to say, "I can't check in, I can't," you know, for so many reasons. So I just wish you strength in supporting students through this, and parents as well to help support their students through this. It's going to be, this over the summer.
Obviously, we vote on this tonight. It becomes part of the handbook. Will there be any separate communication opportunity for discussion with parents before the last week of August? Discussion in... I'm just, I'm sure there will be response to this, and so how does, all three principals, but I think more the high school. How would you... How would you entertain questions and concerns, some of the same questions we're asking here tonight?
Right, so I, I'm more than willing to host kind of an open town hall forum at the high school where they can come and ask those questions. Around us, the research points that Born has a cellphone policy, Mashpee has a cellphone policy, Falmouth High School has a cellphone policy, Marstow High School has a cellphone policy, Sturgis Charter School is starting a cellphone policy. So honestly, and some of them started in September of 2023. So we are, we are, we have been generous in, in the delay in a way by not, you know, enforcing this sooner. And we are not removing them, like I understand your, that anxiety kids might have. So they will see their phone on the, in the pocket if they have to bring it. If they truly do need the phone, then they can bring it to school, but it will be safe, it will be visible. Um, and hopefully the learning is so engaging that they forget about the phone and they're, they're really excited about what's happening in class, ideally.
If it's turned off and buried in the backpack, it doesn't have to go, it can just stay there, correct?
Right, exactly, exactly. Right, or in the car or wherever.
So we're really appealing to these young boys, young men and women actually, to exercise their own agency to take control of this. We're giving them the opportunity to take control of this situation.
Right, and, and truly, it's, it will be most difficult for grade 10, 11, and 12 because we've done it in seventh and eighth and they're coming from Oak Ridge where they're not allowed. So it, it, it may not be as shocking population-wise as, as the entire building and maybe just the, the three grade levels that haven't experienced it.
Maybe we could send out notifications or something to students to do some practice, you know? Build up time, you know, kind of desensitization if they could work up a schedule and just begin to take control of that themselves. Adults could probably benefit from some of this as well. Thank you.
Okay, I do-
Anything else? I think we're good?
On the phone, I do have a couple other, two other items for the handbook. The, just, uh, language surrounding the honor roll. So the current language says honor roll comes out at the end of each semester. And then any student who maintains As in all subject will be placed on the high honor roll, any student who maintains an average between 80 and 89 with no grade below and 80 will be placed on honor roll. So the proposed change says that honor roll and high honor roll will be acknowledged at the end of every term instead of just the two semesters, so every term, so they have a chance of celebration each term, there are four terms. And then for honor roll, students who maintain a B or above will earn honor roll, students who maintain an A and above in each class will earn high honors. And then my second, um, my second last detail was regarding summer school. So the current language for summer school in the middle high school handbook referred to grades nine through 12. So what we would like to do is add language that says students in grades seven through 12 who fail core subject, ace core subject or core subjects for the academic year will be enrolled in a summer program to earn credit and/or the skills specific to the failed course. Um, school counselors will work with the families to find an appropriate approved program. And then failure to enroll in the approved summer program may impact promotion eligibility and credit loss, which has been in existence for grades nine through 12, uh, nine through 12, and we would like to, we would like to move that down seven through 12.
Is there a cost for any of those kind of credit recovery or additional courses to a parent and is there obviously financially available when needed?
Yes, so there is a cost. It's been in effect, um, there's, there are various options that have various economic prices. So the counselors typically work with the families to choose the most appropriate. However, um, the certain, um, there are lots and lots of ways that the school helps supplement and provide for those summer programs.
Could you give an example of what you would offer as very low cost or no cost option for a family?
Yeah, so just this summer, we are, are with our middle schoolers in the summer scholars program that we host. So they, they go and they have ELA math and some science, like that's good, that's good. Um, and they know the staff and, and so that would be one. There's another one that's online that we have enrolled just when it's a focused area, for example, an ELA, grade eight ELA, there's an online program. There are a couple of different ones that the counselors have connected families with. So there's more autonomy with that because they don't have to go anywhere, they can do it on, online?
Christine?
And so say a student chose or family chose not to do, not partake in those options, then you, then it would result in either credit lost could result in, well, a credit loss, I guess, at the middle school, high school, which also could result in extra years, extra time in school? How does that play out? I know we had discussion previously about middle school, high, middle school around retention, what does that look like now with respect to this?
Yeah, so this, um, so this is here and we, ideally, we do all interventions ahead of time, right? So this, even this year, we, we got into a situation where we just, we provided so many interventions that we didn't get into a situation, um, prior. And if so, that we have the summer scholar program where the student can then do some recovery. So yes, the credit recovery piece, definitely the credit deficiency would apply to nine through 12. And that's existed. This is in here, um, the promotion eligibility, again, absolutely no, um, we don't, we want students to move and we want them, but we also want them to be held accountable for work performance during the academic year. And if not, then to learn the skills prior to the next year. So I think that, um, the difference with our previous proposal, this is far more supportive. This is a far more supportive, um, model where we're gonna connect them with the resources they need, get them the skills they need, focus on the areas where they're deficient and get them ready. So they do move on with their, with their class.
Any other comments?
So if they don't do it and they don't cooperate, it is possible they won't, they will be retained in the grade they were in before.
It's possible, it would be, it would be a case-by-case situation with parent meetings and very, very formalized, um, meetings all throughout the academic year. We would not just arrive in June and, and say-
I understand, you made that very clear, that they, they're getting support and help throughout. But if they, if a kid says, I'm not going, I'm not going to summer school and I'm not gonna do it, what's the option then?
I think it would be, I think you, we would really have to look and see if it, if it were one subject or if it were seven subjects. Are we looking at, yeah, I think it's an individual case. We want, we want students, we know the social emotional impact of retention is, is not helpful, it's not gonna work. So we're gonna do everything we can to, to make it crystal clear that they do need the skills and that it would be really in their best interest to, to pursue the opportunities that the school's providing, whether it be over the summer or during the academic year. We do everything we can.
At some point, you know, I'm, I'm looking for, um, my feeling is if you don't do the work, you shouldn't get the prize. And the prize in this case is promotions to another grade. And are you, are you saying that never can happen or?
I'm saying that, I'm saying that up until now, Sandwich Middle High School has had a summer school program for nine through 12. We haven't had anything for grade seven and eight. So what, what I think the first step we need to do, the first step, is to, to incorporate a summer school response to, to, you know, just a lack of work ethic. I'm not talking about students that are struggling with learning or neurodiverse students-
The work ethic, struggling is a whole different-
So I think this piece of, of including grade seven and eight into the summer school expectation for failed core classes is a step in the right direction.
Okay, I have one question which sounds on its face to be ridiculous. How many salatorians will you have next year, do you think?
So we, we have a valedictorian and a salutarian.
One?
Yes.
Because, and the reason I ask this is Cape Cod Tech last year had three salatorians, are you familiar with that?
Oh, no.
And all three of them gave a speech. And I contacted a member of the, their school committee and I said, he said that they tied. And I said, down to the 100th place? And he said, yes. And I said, then you could, could you have gone to the MCAS results and, and broke the tie? Is there any possibility you see of having more than one valedictorian and more than one? I, it happened at Cape Cod Tech.
I mean, it's unusual.
I don't think that's germane to the topic we're discussing.
That wouldn't be the first time somebody's said that.
Well, you said it, but I, I just wanna move us along to the topic that we're discussing.
I have a question, um, but I'm not exactly sure it's for you or, or, um, so my question is when I was looking over the Oak Ridge handbook, and I think the bullying language is the same, like Sandwich Public Schools language, sexual harassment is on there, but I didn't see harassment in the top category. I'm just not sure I understand why and is the, I'm not even clear on the definition difference with harassment and bullying. But I would like to know what it is and, and how that-
I believe those, those definitions are explicit in the district's bullying prevention and intervention plan.
So just to ta, tag on to that question, part of the plan that you identified is to invite input into those various policies wherever they might be, to look at definitions to cohesion. So my sense is what we are approving tonight is what exists.
Correct.
But in all possibility, there may be some-
There's, could be some additional, because I think the game plan, as I talked about in the last meeting, is to ensure that there's some really tight correlation between the bullying prevention and intervention plan and our student handbooks. And it's in very, very user-friendly language that's very, very clear and concise. It's my intent to form a district-wide committee involving educators, parents, um, to take a look at that in a comprehensive fashion.
So just following the person who spoke at public forum today in terms of not seeing anything happening, indeed, there will be a great deal happening.
Correct.
And these handbooks are not static and what we approve tonight is approved until edits and changes come along at some point.
And realize, all three of these handbooks are strictly electronic, they haven't been published in hard copy, so changes after school committee approval are relatively simple.
Okay, you, I'm sorry, Tracy, if you have any more- No, I'm just thinking that, um, and I'm just reading what's in front of me and maybe you have it on there. I just wanna make sure that we're approving something with all of the language that needs to be there. So when situations happen, that there's fitting descriptions for where it fits. So if it's not bullying, you know, or repeated actions, what, what is it fall under? Does it fall under one of these types of definitions? Like because there's sexual harassment.
At the, on, at the back of the handbook, we have the Massachusetts general laws that we follow. And so there's explicit language that itemizes all of those questions, cyberbullying, sexual harassment, harassment. So typically, and there are step-by-step guidelines and what the school is supposed to do, that's in the back of our handbook. So with every case, we follow those steps. So contact law enforcement, investigate, um, and do art pieces. And if something does not necessarily follow under Massachusetts general law for, um, serious consequences outside of the school, then it would follow into, it could perhaps follow into something grounds for serious discipline in our handbook, which is, which I think is what you're looking at. But if you are looking for specific definitions, they, they are in the back of the handbook under Massachusetts general law.
I think Tracy brings up a very good point. I don't know if it would be worth putting an asterisk and some comment, just recognizing the work that's anticipated, that to say, you know, like this, this site is under construction kind of thing and that by the time students see it, families see it for the start of the school year, hopefully the cohesion will be there. And the language would be in a, in a way that people can easily comprehend it. If we don't do anything, to your point, Tracy, it looks like we ignored it. And that's not what we're doing, but that's what the appearance is. So if there's, if we can assure that whatever alignment is going to happen, language change can happen before parents and students get it in September, could we say that because it is digital, that updates of ABC are in progress or something or anticipated for, you know, the end of August and give a date? I'm not, I'm not saying that's useful, but it would address the concern that the appearance is that we just kinda, we just approved handbooks and we didn't do anything with it.
Yeah, or do we, or were individuals thinking about it, but not approve until it looks different?
I think we could, I think your point is valid, um, because we know the, the language that we follow in the process, we follow where it is in the handbook. But maybe to your point, we can create language that explicitly states in the case of, uh, you know, a report of bullying, this and link exactly like what, what happens, how it's reported, what the school does, what the expectations are for follow-through, um, so that it's, so that it's very, very transparent for families and for students.
I'm trying to think of process. Can anybody else have any suggestions about where to go with this? We definitely feel we wanna move the cellphone policy along. We definitely, it sounds like we are in support of the Oak Ridge and the Forestdale handbook changes. Kevin, you had a thought?
How about a motion to approve all the, um, the student handbook subject to minor editing? Can we do that?
Kaylee, you have a suggestion?
Uh, just an idea, would it be possible to go ahead and approve this as is tonight and just as a committee make the public statement that we put a hard line on, when we know all of our, um, meeting dates, that we plan to review this policy manual again at a certain meeting? Like, could we go ahead and announce that now so that that's, you know, in writing, our intent is there, publicly available, but we can go ahead and move this through prior to the start of the school year?
Kevin, did you, started to say something?
Sorry, I was muted there for a second. I think, um, from a process standpoint, the manual's the manual until it's updated. And I think Kaylee's, um, recommendation that we just, we're clear that, uh, the, some of these sections will be updated by this date and we can look at the calendar and pick that date. I think that's a, an elegant solution. I am supportive of the, from a process standpoint, I'm certainly supportive of the cellphone policy. I am concerned that we made a bunch of different, we discussed a bunch of little tweaks and, and edits to it, but we're not, we don't have that language. So should we be approving that part or should we? I mean, I think we can prove it in concept, but I'd, I'd like to see the actual final wording before I vote on it.
So our next, our next meeting, unless we come up with another one, I think is, is it August 14th?
Right.
So if we could put over-
Does that make, do you understand where I'm getting at though?
I don't wanna slow you down, but I think we need to pay attention to the fact that it should be in total, at the time we approve it, given everything. It's important anyway, but more so now.
So I mean, I, I don't want to have an idea in my mind of what the word, the wording's gonna be and then it's something different. I don't mean that in, in you, Jeanie, it's just, as, as it, as it thinks it edited, it happens. I'd like to see clear language of what it's gonna be.
Okay.
I certainly support it though.
So that we, Christine, you have-
Just wanna ask a clarifying question to Tracy. So, so harassment is in the code of conduct policy as an actionable offense, but you're just concerned that there's not a definition for harassment versus sexual harassment? Okay, so making it more clear cut for families about what that is.
Yeah, I don't see mention of harassment. I see sexual harassment in it.
Number 22 in the grid?
Our terms need to align.
Yeah, so that's bullying, so harassment.
But there is some language in this.
Sexual harassment is on there.
In the interest of moving this along, having been there before, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Forestale and Oak Ridge handbooks as presented.
Second.
Second, second by Kevin. Motion made by Bert, any discussion? All in favor of approving the Forestale and Oak Ridge handbooks, say aye.
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 Is that unanimous? Yes, it is, 7-0. Okay, and then, we are not voting on the middle high school until we see it again on or before August 14th.
Can I make a motion that we accept the new cellphone restriction policy addition?
We, we all made a bunch of different recommendations, I certainly support in concept, that, I think we can.
Support it in principle, then, but move on.
But it doesn't stand on itself, it's part of the document.
Right.
The cellphone policy doesn't live by itself.
I don't think we need a formal motion, I think you, I think the consensus here that we support it pending final language that we could approve, just so we know exactly what it says. The nice part about that, I think, also, is that gives people a month to reach out to you if they have a concern, and a month I'm going to hear about it from my daughter, that's a whole nother story.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Makes sense?
I think you have in the packet the actual cellphone policy.
Yeah, we do have it.
Yeah.
But then we talked about changes to it. Unless I misunderstood.
Yeah, that maybe, including laptops, terrifying around the headphones.
It's not, it's not finished yet, we haven't seen the final copy. All right, moving along. Other topics not reasonably anticipated, the chair, I don't know if you saw your MASC notification of the joint conference with the superintendents, it's November 6 through 8. On the 6th, it's the opening day, that evening, there's a dinner meeting. We don't have to do anything tonight, but if, in fact, there are folks that would bring us, either without a leader, without a superintendent at the table, or without a quorum, that we might think of amending our calendar, but we don't have to do it today. So early birds, you can start to register, so if you're going to register, take a look at that. Subcommittee reports, negotiations, subcommittee. The negotiations, subcommittee met on June 20th, it met on June 25th, and we are scheduled to meet on July 2nd. And we will have more of an update on negotiations at the executive session following this session. The policy, subcommittee.
This is the second reading for the Section H policies, which is a really short three policy section on negotiations. For all three sections, we're recommending that we adopt the mask policy as written. It really is minimal changes to our existing policies, adding some legal references, quoting the current law, changing pronouns from he to they, and then just minimal edits, so no substantiative changes to that, but that is our recommendation for the Section H policies.
Is there a motion to approve the policies as revised in folder H?
I'll make a motion that we approve the updates to the Section 8 policies as presented in the graphic organizer for subject, for Section H as presented.
Second.
Second by Danielle, motion made by Kevin, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Unanimous, 7-0.
Only sixteen, eighteen more letters to go.
You're doing a good job. Liaison Advisory Committee reports? I see none. The warrants, I've seen that we have enough signatures.
I'll make a motion that we approve the warrants as presented.
Second by Tracy, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bert? No, I'm asking, I didn't hear your vote. Oh, I said, I'm sorry, yes. Six.
In favor, opposed.
Any favor, you've got me all confused now.
Favor, opposed, abstentions.
Got it, in favor, six. Opposed, one. Six, one. Zero. Okay. This is like baseball scores, I'm really mixed up. Okay, for our second public forum, anybody wish to be heard at public forum? I see nobody approaching. Future agenda items. One thing I thought we might want to think about is perhaps a presentation by BJ with regard to the update on the new IEP process procedures. I missed the programs that were given locally, but I was wandering around MASC's website recently, and there is a wonderful program, it was from March, that goes over all the changes, and I think it's important for school committee members to be abreast of what those changes are, and emphasis, where the renewed emphasis and new emphasis is, so we might want to think about that as we go forward. Any other future agenda items? All right.
Just, I think it would be helpful to, once it is kind of updated and reviewed, to review with the community what the bullying intervention prevention policy is and involves and entails.
Absolutely.
So some clarity around definitions, processes, et cetera, so that there's a good understanding of what the community might be privy to, what they might not be privy to, but what's going on behind the scenes.
Are you thinking about maybe a forum?
No, probably just an abbreviated.
Just an update?
Yeah.
Okay. Perhaps we could do that along with the handbook approval, since it's so much part of that, or part.
And then any additions with Sean Donovan to the after-hours cellphone use and supervision, and any type of training we might be instilling in new coaches, and any changes for the next coming school year would be great.
Good point. Anything else? Okay. Acknowledgements, closing remarks? Other than it was great to have the Golden Apple Award Ceremony tonight, that was really positive. Okay. Adjournment to executive session, may I have a motion?
I move that we adjourn to executive session per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, for reason number three, to discuss strategy and negotiations for collective bargaining with the SCA, Unit A, teachers and Unit B ESPs and the custodial and administrative assistant units. The committee will not reconvene in open session.
May I have a second? Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Tracy, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstained? Seven, zero.
Well done.
Zero. I am educable, educatable. All right, we are adjourned, thank you.
We can stay here.